Good evening, everyone. Today's Monday, October 2nd, 2023. It's 6:30 PM. It's time for the Board of Selectmen meeting. Chairman Sigurdnevich is unavailable tonight, so I'll be sitting in for him. I'd also like to state that this meeting is being recorded. First order of business, let's stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sullivan.
Before we get started, on behalf of the Board and townspeople, I'd like to send our sympathy to the family of Allen Brackett. Allen's a member of the Dudley Fire Department, and he recently lost his brother at a young age. The chief could probably speak on it, but I believe his brother's 57. I'm sure I speak very well. We send our sympathies to Allen and his family.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Former chairman.
Former chairman. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Sorry. Okay, item number four. No, no, item three. Approve minutes of September 25th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Item four, citizens' comments. Is there anyone here who has something to say on, that is not on tonight's agenda? I see Mr. Carmanyani.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Rich Carmanyani, past Grand Night of Knights of Columbus Council 228. The Board was kind enough to offer a toll booth two weeks ago on a Saturday, and then we had a rain date of last Saturday, and guess what? It rained. Wondering if we could get some consideration on behalf of the council to extend the rain date for this Saturday, which will only guarantee a downpour. Great weather to be a duck. Is that something we could do?
Thanks, Rich. Yeah, we, I think we had previously voted to approve this and a rain date, so barring any objection from my fellow Board members, I'm going to refer this matter to the town administrator and the police chief to accommodate.
And I think as long as the Board's okay with it, the chief and I have already discussed it electronically, and there doesn't seem to be an issue with rescheduling to that date.
Mr. Johnson?
No one else is scheduled for it?
No.
Anyone else?
Nope.
Yeah, I have no problem with it. What's the Board's party? Need to vote? Well, can't vote again, but I guess it will.
You refer it to me, and we'll help, we'll, I'll take care of it with the chair.
Okay. Jonathan will take care of that. Thanks, Rich.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Hope you make some money.
Yeah, I hope it doesn't rain again. Mr. Zakaria says 58% chance of rain, but let's.
We'll reabsence.
All right, item five, Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Ruda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a Board is aware, Town Council and I have been following the draft regulations being devised by the State's Cannabis Control Commission. For those who are unaware, that's the commission that was appointed to oversee licensing and regulations for the retail manufacturing and growing of cannabis in the Commonwealth. These draft regulations on host community agreements and social equity are of major concern to cities and towns throughout the state that have entered into host community agreements with local cannabis retailers. They propose changes that will effectively remove community impact fees currently agreed to and impose changes to the regulations that have already been negatively impacted by some changes in previous regulations. So, in Dudley, the direct impact to us will be after the FY22 vote from the legislature to increase the level of regulatory authority that the Cannabis Control Commission has, they now have the authority to vacate previously agreed upon host community agreements. Of course, the local town councils and the Mass Municipal Association are up in arms about it. They're going to court over it. They're arguing things such as breach of contract and so forth. So, effective November 9th, 2023, we will have, they will have broad sweeping, meaning the Cannabis Control Commission, they'll have broad sweeping power to review, regulate, enforce, and approve host community agreements. They'll be able to establish procedures and policies for municipalities to promote and encourage full participation in the regulated marijuana industry during negotiations of host community agreements with social equity programs and business and economic empowerment priority applicants. And they'll be able to develop a model host community agreement, minimal acceptable standards and best practices for municipalities and prospective licensees during negotiations. So specifically for Dudley, that means no later than May 1st, 2024, the Cannabis Control Commission may require that licensed applicants and or licensees, which would be us, in host communities reach and adhere to an HAC, Host Community Agreement, that complies with state law and new regulatory requirements, meaning that there's no grandfathering it. When they change the regulations, it changes the contract that communities across the Commonwealth have already negotiated. Specifically, the following is of concern to the community and the Mass Municipal Association, because on or before May 24th, 2024, parties shall ensure that host community agreements include a statement of all stipulated responsibilities, including but not limited to the following. Clear, specific terms regarding a host community's assessment of a community impact fee, if applicable, meaning that the local impact fees that provide a percentage, generally 3%, which is what I believe we have, of revenues to the host community, that provision goes away. A new provision requiring a host community to annually transmit its invoice of alleged, and they use that word often now, alleged community impact fees to a marijuana establishment, within one month of the anniversary of the date the marijuana establishment received final licensure. So, just to give an example of what that means for us, Dudley's Host Community Agreement with DMA, which is Greatest Hits, calls out the 3% community impact fee based on DMA's revenues for Dudley for five years. We negotiated that. The new provision requiring a host community to annually transmit its invoice of alleged community impact fees to a marijuana establishment, within one month of the anniversary of the date the establishment received its licensure, translates for Dudley as of, well, last week, I think I sent it in. Between January 23rd and last week, the Town of Dudley incurred $663, mostly for logged routine police property and building checks. Our current Host Community Agreement calls for a $40,000 minimum community impact fee. So because these new regulations from the Cannabis Control Commission will take effect in May of '24, I received an email from the accountant for the greatest hits that states, and this is right, Mr. Chairman, from the email, "Based upon the changes in the HCA regulations and laws since 2022, the $40,000 payment, which we recently received, which is the minimum payment we received under our Host Community Agreement, the $40,000 payment is in excess of the cost incurred by the Town of Dudley, because they received my actual of 660 bucks. So, please apply costs of quarter 1, 2, and 3 against the amount that was paid in May, meaning the $40,000." So, we deducted 660 bucks from $40,000, and away we go. So, the good news is that we never ever overprojected those revenues in any way, shape, or form, and we're very conservative with it. The bad news is that the rug's been pulled out. So, there's going to be more to come on this, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda. Anybody have anything to say about that? I do. Mr. Johnson?
This is the State's way of making that business more competitive. It's rare that I see a bit, the State make businesses more competitive.
Well, this, part of, part of this new regul, so I, let me just say this. The entire seminar that was presented online that I saw has been posted on the website, so members of the public can look at it and see what it, all of the different provisions are. In addition, host communities must adopt local rules or bylaws to comply with social equity requirements on or before May 1st, 2024. So that'll be something that'll be tying us up for the, in the months coming. But there's also a provision that, of course, all communities are pretty much fighting that have host community agreements in place, that takes away some of the money, revenue that would have been otherwise distributed locally and brings it back into the Commonwealth Conference. So, Mr. Chairman, the Town's always been very conservative in leveraging any projected revenue from its host community agreements. So this new change to the law, although every penny counts when it comes to the budget, while disappointing, because we've been conservative and cautious, will not pose a major revenue challenge for the Town, because we never counted on it to begin with.
Mr. Sullivan?
Nope. My numbing, that's all.
Mr. Johnson, before I go.
I remember the last time Kim Roy was in town, she said, "If there's any questions in the House or anything you want to talk about, call me up and I'll comment." I think we finally have the topic that we've wanted to come and talk about.
I think she's the one, one of the few opposing on the Cannabis Control Commission to a lot of these changes in regulations, but by virtue of the fact, right?
It's funny you mention that, Mr. Johnson, because I was thinking the same thing. I may text her tonight and ask her what's up. I mean, apparently their chairman, their chairman has gotten fired by the state treasurer, so their, their, their house isn't in order as it is, but this seems like just a blatant money grab. I feel like, you know, Dudley was not at the first wave, but then a close fast follower, second wave on, you know, taking a chance on having this high-value agriculture industry in our town, which, and, you know, we negotiated these things, and now they just decide, nah, we don't want to let you do that anymore. So, that's a problem. And then the second, the next thing is, yes, you're absolutely right, Mr. Ruda, the fact that we didn't overproject cannabis revenues, much to the chagrin of some, some folks that, that said we were being too conservative. And this, I'm just going to say it again, this is why we don't base, you know, life-saving, you know, decisions on both public safety based on, on revenue we just can't count on yet. So, while disappointing, I'm glad that we held the line like we, like we did. Thank you, Jonathan.
So, Mr. Chairman, more positive things. With the passage of three of the five override questions in August, we've been able to reengage our cybersecurity consultants and work toward reinstating the important function for the Town's network, our servers, and the website. And this doesn't only protect us internally, but it protects the public that uses our services and has information here at the Town Hall. There, there is also an IT grant through the State's Community Compact Grant Program that they've asked our intern Olivia to work with me on applying for, and if we're successful, we'll provide some funding for additional hardware upgrades and funding towards developing a disaster recovery program. And we began gaming that out with the fire chief just before the budget crunch started. We had to put that on hold, but hopefully we can return to it through some grant funding that's going to be available. And that disaster recovery program and exercise will further add to the resiliency of the Town's IT infrastructure if it's successful. So, I think we're in a good position to get that grant, because it tail ends off of a project that we started previously with cybersecurity and were grant funded for originally. Our town planner, Mr. Chairman, suggested that we apply for additional funding with the assistance of CMRPC for, for the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant Program. This would be the second phase and would assist the Town with the application required for construction funding based on the near final design and estimate for the project on Airport Road, which was engineered through tie-in bond and was required to move on to the construction phase. I want to mention that both the town planner and highway superintendent have both played important roles in moving the project forward to this stage. Mr. Chairman, also, Michelle Jervis has been successful in applying for, and the Town has been awarded a modest grant through the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. That's from the Massachusetts DEP. This grant will help offset expenses related to the recycling center for materials. For example, the decals that we get for our cars, the grant will pay for those. And so, Michelle's efforts has, has gone a long way in helping, what basically translates into the Town being able to hold the price of permits level for FY24 for three years in a row now. So, we're doing everything we can to keep the prices affordable for local residents. That's about all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any comments on, on all that, guys? Michelle, great job getting that. Just underscore what Jonathan said about holding the price of a recycling center permit flat for three years. That's pretty remarkable in this environment. So, great job to everybody with that.
Mr. Johnson has some.
Mr. Johnson?
I agree. Thank you, Michelle. You know, anytime you can pull cost out of something that's barely in the black, it's always a good thing.
Excellent. A motion to accept the Town Administrator's report?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Landry, seconded by Mr. Sullivan. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Jonathan. Great job. All right, item six, new business. Board of Selectmen vote to waive the remainder of the police chief's probation and modify the term of his employment agreement from an expiration date of January 13th, 2024, to the date of June 30th, 2026, the extension term, as permitted under the employment agreement executed on December 19th, 2022. Board of Selectmen will be provided with the chief's fiscal year 23 performance evaluation for public comment under discussion on the motion. Start with you, pick up, or we just?
So, Mr. Chairman, this is to, as I think we publicly announced when, when the chief was appointed, it was a one-year term with a probationary period, which was kind of linked to the lieutenant's position. The chief had the ability to move back to lieutenant if it didn't end up being a, a good match for, for the chief or for the Town. I think we've gotten way past that, and I think it certainly has been a good, good match and a, and a good, certainly a good move for the Town. And so, my recommendation would be to go ahead and waive the remainder of the police chief's probation and modify the term of his employment agreement from an expiration date of January 13th, 2024, to the date of June 30th, 2026. And this language already, already appears in his employment agreement and only needs to be voted on by the Board of Selectmen.
Excellent. Board members? Mr. Sullivan?
Well, before we take a vote, Mr. Chair, maybe police chief can come up if he wants to say anything, but as Jonathan said, we do have copies of his formative vow, and I'm going to go on the record and say I'm not surprised, excuse me, raspy, I'm not surprised that Merrick, I don't know, he, I think, you know, has met or exceeded most of what was thrown at him in his first year in the job, but I had no doubt that he would do it. So I think to all the naysayers that thought we should do outside and promote externally or, you know, how can you do this, here's the proof that I think we made the right choice.
If I may, when I took over, when I got appointed, it was Friday the 13th, January. I thought that was probably just, you know, not a big deal, but obviously, two months later, we, we had all the budget issues. So I survived through that. There were tough times where I contemplated whether I made the right decision, working with the town officials, John, and my department. We made through it. The Town responded by supporting us, and I think at this point, knock on wood, I don't think it's going to get any worse, hopefully. So, I made my decision that this is a position that I would be looking forward to ending my career as, and I thank for the support from the, the Board and from the Town Administrator and my department.
Chair, thank you for being flexible, leading through positive behaviors and doing everything you needed to do to provide the Town with excellent public safety. The fire chief, I agree with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, after reading the appraisal and seeing for myself firsthand, the chief's level of excellence is in step with his professional history here with Dudley, and we really are blessed to have you here, and thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
And, and for me, Merrick has never a doubt for me that you wouldn't rise to the occasion. You got your team in place. You led through more adversity than probably any chief that started his chief career in Dudley right off the bat, and you, you never wavered, you know, you, you rallied to the support of your, your department, the community. You're out there, you're visible. I mean, you, what he said, we're very blessed to have you in this role. And I'm, 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 I think everybody should be proud that we, we, we stayed within the department, you know, continued what we were doing, and keep everybody safe. Thank you, Merrick.
Thank you.
Board's pleasure.
I'm having trouble accessing. Is there a worded motion that I want to use?
All right, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the remainder of the police chief's probation and modify the term of the employment agreement from an expiration date of January 13th, 2024, to the date of June 30th, 2026, the extension term, as permitted under the employment agreement executed on December 19th, 2022.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Sullivan. Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Awesome. Also, Chief, stay right there, because item 6B. We have a reserve officer, John Galwacki, here. We want to talk about promoting him to a full-time patrolman at the recommendation of Merrick. I'll take any other action relative there, too. Chief. And Mr. Galwacki?
So, a little, a little month ago, Officer Mariano Conti resigned from this full-time position. He was appointed to the reserve list. Shortly thereafter, that same week, we posted the position internally, and the practice right now is that we hire from the reserve list first. We have two reserves as of right now who are eligible, Officer Galwacki and Officer LaRue. Officer LaRue declined to put his name in. Officer Galwacki did. I had a staff, command staff meeting shortly afterwards. The four sergeants and lieutenant agreed that he is a great pick for the next full-time position, and I strongly agree with that. John's got high-level integrity, respectfulness, he's got a hard work ethic, and I think he enjoys this profession. He was hired part-time in 2006. Since then, he worked approximately 4,000 hours in different parts of the law, in our department, as a dispatcher, as a officer. He'll all details. Last year, he finished the Bridge Academy, where he was certified as a full-time officer, and last year, he was also certified by post. So, based on everything and his reputation and his work ethics, I would strongly recommend Officer John Galwacki to be promoted to the next full-time police officer position effective October 27th.
Officer Galwacki, would you like to address everybody? You know, you have anything, any comments?
Hi, good evening. Just, I've been a resident of Dudley with my wife now for over 30 years. We really enjoy this community. We love it here, and looking forward to getting out of the community and working full-time.
I'd like to preemptively congratulate him. I think there's going to be no problem with the vote. My children went to school with John's son, and I've seen John in the cruiser a lot of times out there. Traffic control, takes it very serious, but respectful, as the chief said. There's been no, as far as I know, there's been no citizen pushback on any interaction with John. Nothing but respect on both sides, and I think he'd be an excellent fit downstairs for the department.
Anything else? Jake?
I agree. Mr. Sullivan, thank you for putting your hat in the ring, and it sounds like everything is very positive coming from both of us and the community. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's, it's another intelligent and worthwhile move, and to bring another professional on board. We always welcome that. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with what everybody said. Just, you know, another example of promoting from within, you know, leveraging our strengths, you know, the community, you know, you're already here, and, you know, I'm thankful you put your, put your name forward. already here, and I'm thankful you put your name forward. So, thank you, John. Board members? Pleasure. Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to vote to promote Reserve Officer Glowacki to the position of full-time patrolman at the recommendation of the police chief.
Motion by Mr. Johnson?
Second.
Second, multiple seconds, Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Landry. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. unanimous. Congratulations, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to bring your family up? Want to have the jack come up?
Sure.
Going on the web.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, officer.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. And the chief.
You're perfect.
Perfect, okay.
And, oh, 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 perfect. Hi, come on in. Anywhere you feel comfortable is good. Oh, Chief, you want to come forward a little bit? Or, yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to mischieve. That's perfect. I'll move. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, John. All right. Yep, Laura, you would like to swear in, Officer Glowacki? Oh, Laurie, what'd I say?
Laura.
I did not, I said Laurie's going to swear in.
I thought.
Oh, yeah, boy, play the gentleman.
That's a good chair.
Stand by.
I, John Glowacki, do solemnly swear.
I, John Glowacki, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of my position as patrolman for the Dudley Police Department.
That I will faithfully perform my duties as patrolman for the Dudley Police Department.
As a patrolman, I will represent the town of Dudley in a professional manner.
As a patrolman, I will represent the town of Dudley in a professional manner.
Provide leadership to the department and obey the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Provide leadership to the department. Obey the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
As well as the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
As well as the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
So, hope be good.
So, hope be good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Michelle. Awesome. Thank you, Laurie. Thank you, John. All right. Always a good day when we can promote people here in Dudley. All right, item six C, First Congregational Church is requesting a parking waiver on Center Road on Saturday, December 2nd, 2023rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for their annual Christmas fair. Anybody here from the church? Chief?
Just real quick, the request was made directly to me. I spoke with, I believe it was Mrs. Conkle, she's the one that requested on behalf of the church. I advised her that I would have no opposition to it, as we have always accommodated for other events, so I would have no opposition to do that.
Chief? Board members, any comments? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, making motion for the request from the Congregational Church, parking waiver on Center Road, Saturday, December 2nd, 2023, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for their annual Christmas fair. We wish them well. Make some money.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Landry. Any other discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. unanimous. Thank you. Item six D, the annual Spooktacular is coming up, and they're requesting permission to hold their annual event on Thursday, October 26th, 2023rd, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Michelle? Any details you can share?
Well, it's the fourth annual Spooktacular. Once again, we have all the children congregate in the library's parking lot, and they march up Brandon Road and come back through here, and we have refreshments and smores by the front, games, and everyone, there's a costume contest, and they all have a great time.
Safe house? Safe house will be there?
Safe house will be there.
Excellent.
Wonderful. Board members?
Mr. Chair, granting the annual Spooktacular permission to hold on Thursday, October 26th, 2023, from 6:00 p.m. beginning at the library and ending at the town hall municipal complex.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Landry. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. unanimous. Thank you. And Mr. Ruda?
Just, I did two things, Mr. Chairman, that, first of all, we always want to thank the local businesses that step up without being solicited and make those donations directly to the event as soon as they hear about it. Secondly, I'd like to place on the agenda for October 16th, which is the brief meeting that we have before the town meeting, to declare the trick-or-treating between Chief Five and Seven on October 30th concurrent with Webster.
That'd be fine.
30th or 31st?
31st.
31st? 31st, so it'll be on the agenda for October 16th, but just to give everyone a heads-up, it will be there, you know?
Yeah, usually, we start getting asked about that. Good call. So, we'll vote on that next time. Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Always a good when we can have some nice events for everybody. All right. Next item, Department Communications. Chief, anything else?
Yeah, just two things real quick. The drug take-back is going to be scheduled for Saturday, October 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. That's when we ask the residents to go through their house to see if there's any expired medicine or any medication that they have that they no longer use to dispose of it correctly. Putting in garbage or, you know, flushing down the toilet could contaminate the water. We don't want to end up with that problem. So, the best way to do it is to bring it that day and we'll dispose of it, and also, we'll take used needles that day. And then, just a quick update, I'm working with the town administrator about the ACO, the Animal Control Officer Position. I have an officer going to training later this month, hopefully to be certified, in the process of trying to figure out the logistics of a car to handle that, and then, hopefully, I'll have some more information the next meeting we got in that position. So, just in the meantime, we've had luck with Oxford ACO and Salage ACO covering our town, including last week where they had an apartment with 29 cats that were left abandoned in an apartment, so those surrounding ACOs stepped up and helped us out in the meantime. So, hopefully, I have a better update for the board next meeting or two. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean?
Nothing from the fire department.
George? Water sewer?
Just a quick update, our projects are moving forward at a pretty good rate. First half project is, they've got water on it now, and all the connections have been made. That next step, they'll do the sidewalks and things like that, and paving later on. We still have issues going on with the trenches, the washouts, things like that due to the rain. It's pretty much hard to keep everything as, you know, perfect because of the way they come down with the downpours, but they're doing the best we can. There will be other shutdowns of the water service to do the connections and things as you probably saw on your phone, so, but once we get that done, we should start having some better results, and dirty water's going to be an issue right for the next few months. We're going to try to see if we can do more flushing as we go along and alleviate that, so keep the faith.
George?
What do you tell people that are experiencing it? Because a guy sent me a picture of his water, and he was not happy. I don't know if he reached out to the water department, but it was...
A lot of them do, some of them don't. The only thing we can tell them to do is keep their water running out of their back silk clock faucet, go in the backyard and let it run for a while. It's just the nature of the beast. When you start shutting lines down and then reactivating them again, there's going to be surges of dirt and material in the water. The best thing to do, if they can't alleviate it that way, is to call us. We'll come out and assist them to try to, you know, modify the situation. It's a tough thing because some of these areas are shut down on various sides of the street, and then they're offering little pockets of dirt that we can't seem to get out right now because we can't open other sides due to the construction. So, and it's not just the area that we're talking, it's other areas of the town, even down towards Mason Road area. We're getting a lot of issues, and Perryville is an extreme problem. I'm almost flushing once a week down there now because of the issues, the water, the dirt materials travel. We're a close-knit system, so we're working as hard as we can to get this problem solved as soon as the construction minimizes down a bit, then we should start seeing some results.
Yeah, George, I had a couple of residents ask me about, you know, when they have the pipes going over their driveways, will we get that in time for plowing?
Those are going to be removed once the cold weather comes in. We can't have those out there. So, we're racing against time now to get the areas that have those temporary water surfaces hooked up, put the mains in and get them connected to the houses, then we can remove those. So, those are the priority ones for us to do that. We're hoping we can get enough good weather till at least November timeframe to nip everything and get everything completed, but you never know. It's been raining at certain times, and we're sorry about the inconvenience with the rain, but they try even to work in the rain, and if you get a downpour, it's goodbye Charlie at that point.
Thank you, George. Okay, Rich? Treasure collector, anything?
Nobody wants to talk about taxes right now. I'll go on a few other items. Right now, town's looking to fill the Assistant Treasurer position, so I appreciate, we've turned a corner and now there's light at the end of the tunnel you make mention of. You're going to have the Spooktacular on Thursday night, and hopefully, Thursday night's going to pick back up. At one point, the board's going to take a look at the town hall hours. I'd be happy to sit down individually or in a group, give you my feelings on how that serves the community. Obviously, what worked well five years ago needs to be looked at, and I'll leave it for that. If I didn't say specifically, Michelle and Jonathan have been very helpful getting those ads out, putting the logistics together. The days of sending a cover letter folded nicely are gone. It's tap and go. The hiring process is a little dynamic, a little different dynamic, so I thank them both pushing that forward. The other part, the Hampshire Council of Government's Insurance Trust are reviewing the Medicare. Everybody knows the HMO and the PPO have a January 1st renewal. Your Medicare plans are a January 1st renewal. They're looking at the renewal rates for the October meeting. We'll have things put in, sort of set in stone, which means we'll have our open enrollment, but it's a moot point because anybody who's retired and over the age of 65 is already on the Medicare plan, so a little repetition there. Rates look competitive. We are fortunate that it is a large group, relatively healthy group, and also, your Medicare, the federal government is paying a portion of it, so they're the ones working on the formulary, they're the ones negotiating the prices. So, if there's ever any health insurance questions, and again, the treasurer's office is the one to review the health insurance policy manual. Usually, that's driven by a change in the law, spike in costs, something like that. Fingers crossed, it will be a very dull review, and there won't be much. I don't see anything on the horizon that's going to tell me it's going to be a major rewrite, maybe a sentence or two, not much, but I won't hold to that. If the board has any questions, again, whether it's the budget, general public, what have you, happy to field those emails. And again, if it's great subject matter that many would benefit from, we'd put something together so it could be reviewed at a meeting, and I could talk all night. So, thank you very much. Appreciate your consideration this evening. Good night.
Thank you, Rich. That's it. Departments, next up, board member comments. Mr. Johnson? Nothing tonight? Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. Chair, as we look out the window, it's getting dark earlier and earlier. Going to mess with the clock soon. Just be careful out there, there's been, maybe not so much here, unfortunate accidents, weather-related, some dark, what's related. Just everyone be careful, take that extra second, both ways, and enjoy Columbus Day. Nice long weekend coming up, nice traditional holiday, kind of towards the end of the middle fall season. Enjoy it, everybody be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Landry?
No, sir.
Nothing? I have nothing further tonight, but updates. And we have executive session tonight. Sullivan, you want to take us there?
POS will vote to move it to executive session on the General R 30A, Section 2, not to reconvene an open session, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct contract negotiation with non-union personnel. Police chief, reconvene an open session only if deemed necessary by the chair. I so move.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Johnson. Roll call vote, please.
Steven Sullivan, aye.
Mark Landry, aye.
John Marcy, aye. Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Good night.[1693.76]